For Tuesday, July 19th, I'd like to call this meeting to order if we can all rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Any public comment for this budget work session at this time? Any agenda modifications, Mike? Are we golden the way we are, sir?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilman Lundin.
Second.
Second simultaneously by Collison and Burgley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to the work session items. Mr. Becker, we do this every year. If you just want to keep going, we're all fine with that. You do your thing, sir.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work through the, the agenda here. If there are any questions along the way, any comments, any concerns, anything like that, just, just interrupt. It doesn't matter if we're, if it's quite on topic or not, I'm happy to address it. So a bigger overarching idea, this is the first of up to three budget work sessions. We'll have at least two. This one is going to deal with operating budgets. So general fund, EDA, and then enterprise funds and debt service there finally. Before we get started here, some of, in the packet is, is the detail of the, of the budget. I'm not going to put that up on the screen here unless we've got any specifics that we want to address. Just to be aware, I've got for, you know, general notes and assumptions, just makes clear where we're at. All wages include a projected COLA. I don't have a crystal ball, so kind of taking a guess here on how, how negotiations and contracts will pan out. But I've taken what I think is a reasonably educated guess. Health insurance, I've got based on 2022 premiums plus 15 percent. Workers' comp, I've got 2022 rates and a 25 percent inflation factor. That's based on our actual, actual experience within, within workers' comp. Property liability insurance, 2022 rates plus 10 percent. Dental, 2022 rates plus 5 percent. The life accident, accidental dismemberment and death. Insurance is no premium, or I'm sorry, no inflation over the 2022 premiums. I wouldn't expect that to be the case, and if it were, it wouldn't be a giant adjustment to the budget. The budget that we're going to discuss here tonight adds one, just shy of $180,000 to fund balance, and we'll talk a little bit about why that's important. And right now, the estimated taxable market value has increased 26 percent. We touched on that a little bit during Cal. That is, that's quite a remarkable amount. This is our first work session. Like I mentioned, we're going through the operating budgets here today. Next meeting on Wednesday, August 3rd, just to make that clear, after the regular council meeting, we'll go through capital budgets. For, for that one, we're going to have some big changes for the liquor store and for PD. The rest of it will look very, very familiar to pass to capital budgets. Then first meeting in September, we'll set a preliminary budget and a preliminary levy. The only thing that is binding there is, is that once we set that preliminary levy, we cannot go above that. We can drop it. Depending how things go, I won't know the health insurance renewal rate at that time, depending on contract negotiations go, some other things. I may very well ask the council to set that levy artificially high, just to make sure that we have appropriate wiggle room with the understanding that we will lower it in December. But to make sure we're not, we're not hamstrung there. Then first meeting in December, we'll set that final budget and the final levy, and we'll go from there. Actually, I might back up here before we get into that, just to make, make it clear, because budget work sessions are not, not binding in any way. We can change our minds about things. We can discuss things and, and make, make tweaks that we can readdress at the next work session or at preliminary budget or, or final budget. So we're really just trying to make sure we're barking up the right tree here. Within the general notes and assumptions, I maybe is, maybe should have put this in, but I think, I think I've harped on this enough times, but I'll, I'll bring it all up again is, broadly speaking, when I'm putting together the budget, when I'm putting, putting together the budget, that's the three main goals that we've articulated as a council and staff, right? One, we want to get levy debt free. We're going to try and do that by 2031. If we can pull that off, as things stand now, we'd be the largest city in the state with no levy debt. That's a big deal. Not many cities are in that position. We ought to try to see that through. Two, we've, we've discussed time and time again, we want a steady and declining tax rate. Right? We've all heard me say before, there are no residents or taxpayers that want to see their tax rate or their tax bill going up and down like this. Slow and steady. If it has to go up, that's fine. Sometimes that happens, but we go up slow and steady. We want to try to go down, and when we go down, we want to go down slow and steady and make sure that it's a sustainable trajectory. Last thing we want to do is have any taxpayers open their tax statement and be surprised. And if they are surprised, it ought to be the school or the county that's done that, not us. Lastly, we've got our fund balance policy, right? And our target there is 70 percent. Reason that is 70 percent, which is higher than most other cities in the state, the reason is, is that that gives us an opportunity to have a rainy day fund. So when we do have an economic downturn, when we do have a downturn in the housing market, and those things will happen, we do have the reserves to be able to maintain a tax rate that is steady and not have to have double-digit increases or decreases. What's that?
What was the, the fund balance rate was, didn't we set that higher than normal? It was like 50 percent, wasn't it?
It had been 50 percent. Now we do a range. If I remember correctly, it's 30 to 70 percent. Maybe it's 20 to 70. The point is at this, in this point in the cycle, we need to be adding to fund balance. So that when we do have that economic downturn in the future, which will come someday, we've got, we've got some cushion to help us maintain a, a level tax rate. Because if there is one time where every taxpayer needs us to be fiscally responsible, it is when there is an economic downturn. They do not need to see a huge increase in their tax bill at that point in time, because we didn't put away enough money ahead of time. So with that, we'll get into where we're sitting, big picture, right? Not the details, but the, the big picture, the important stuff. In the budget that I've presented, proposed 2023 total levy, this would include all of the components that you see here. General fund, capital maintenance, street, EDA, abatement and debt service. We're looking at just over $4 million. It is a significant change from last year. That is up 23 percent. I absolutely do understand that. Important part there is to remember that the levy going up 23 percent is only half the story. When market value goes up 26 percent, you still see a net decrease in the tax rate. And that is important. The understanding there is, is that if the tax rate goes down and your home value stays the same, your city taxes will go down. That's how that works. So that's why we spend the majority of our time talking not about levies, but about tax rates. Because that is the actual thing that actually calculates your tax bill as a resident or business owner. Spend a little bit of time on the graph here. Basically, yeah, levy goes, levies go up over time. And part of the reason I don't like to spend too much time talking about levies is because no matter what you do, no matter whether your city is growing or stagnant in population with no new home growth, any of that, your levy will go up over time, just because of inflation. It's not a particularly good metric for measuring against yourself over years, and it's not a particularly good metric for measuring against any other cities. Tax rate. Projected 2023 tax rate as the, as presented would be 57.6 percent. That's a 2.3 percent decrease from last year. Bear in mind that, I say last year, current year, 2022 is 59.01. The average tax rate over the prior 15 years, 66.7. That would put the 2023 tax rate of 57.6 at 13.6 percent under the average. We've been doing that consistently for some time. I think it's, it'd be wise to, to continue that trend. This graph is a great one. You can see that once we got to 2019, we started to kind of really coalesce around this idea of a slow, steady, decreasing tax rate. We don't want to see wild ups and downs. You can see in prior years, we did have that. There were years where we went down quite a bit, and there were years where we went up quite a bit. There wasn't a particularly large amount of consistency in that. I would go back to every taxpayer, resident or business owner, wants to see consistency. They want to have some certainty, and they do not want to be surprised. I think, I think this tax rate, at least projected, we don't have final market value numbers. I think this tax rate does that. Operating, general fund, operating budget summary. If I can get this all on my screen here, so it's a little easier for everybody to see. This is just a summary based on departments and revenue categories. We've got the taxes, license permits, right? Total revenues at 4.651. I would go back up here and note that even though this unreserved fund balance shows a negative, that is correct. That is how you represent a contribution to fund balance. So that's what we're going to talk about, that 180,000. That's what's sitting out there, that if we run through the budget and we actually hit every number right on target, at the end of the year, we will have picked up $180,000 of cash in the general fund. That's that rainy day fund that we talk about. That's why we have a fund balance policy that seeks to have a, a, a balance at 70 percent of the next year's budgeted expenditures. And if anybody's got any, any questions along the way, please, please feel free. This gives a little history based on departments over 100,000, so we kind of take out the, the smaller departments, right? We've got like sanitation, where we spend very, very little, those types. We can see the trend here. And we've got a little bit of growth in, in financial administration, a little bit of growth in, in planning and zoning. We see quite a bit of growth in, in police. And a little bit of variance there in the parks and rec, where it's kind of been a little bit up and down, along with streets, a little bit up and down. But we can see that there's a fair amount of growth there. And incidentally, that, that difference between the, the blue 2018 line and the proposed orange 2023 line for PD, between, over that six years, even though it sounds like it's five, it's actually six years, that is, FYI, that is a 58 percent increase. So. Not that that's necessarily good or bad, but it is what it is. 2023 proposed, this is just a pie chart, right? Give a little better, different representation of how we break down the general fund. What are the large categories? You know, you see streets, parks and rec, financial administration, police services, kind of the bigger chunks of that pie. Not, not unlike any other year.
Why have we seen such a big increase on that, that police administration budget there? I mean, 58 percent increase and what's the cause for that?
There's a few things since 2018 is, one, we've, we have added two officers during that time. We've also added a part-time admin staff. We've also rolled over code enforcement. I think a lot of people forget that. Code enforcement was once upon a time, its own standalone department that was rolled into 20, 2019, 2020 was probably the first effective year. That it was, we discussed it in 19, we rolled it in in 2020. So code enforcement moved over. So that was, in any given year, $35,000 to $65,000 of expenditures roughly, that got rolled in there. And after that, it's, it's, it's kind of the ancillary things, right? Some of it is, Chief Myers has requested additional training, right? It became pretty clear when he took over that we were really not maybe training all the officers the way that we probably ought to. I think, I think councils agreed with that in the past, but those trainings aren't cheap either. And it's, it's been, and after that, it's, it's about making sure that the PD's actually funded properly within that operating budget.
That police department remodel or the building and the whole thing would be reflected in this, or when does, when does that come online? What year does that come online? Or is that not part of this administration?
No, none of the, the operating budget itself isn't really affected dramatically by that. There was some inflation for, you know, some inflation for, for utilities, but right now, I'm projecting that. While we own that building, we do still have a renter. So we're not, we're not necessarily taking on all the full load of all the expenditures of that building. We are just now getting to a point where we finally have gotten a satisfactory quote on, well, what I would deem to be a satisfactory quote on engineering services. And so now it's about lining all those items up, the HVAC, the electrical, the, get the structural drawings, security and cameras, all those types of things. Get those all worked out and come up with what that budget is. We had budgeted for 2022, $50,000 for that, for those basic renovations. I suspect we'll probably go over that by some amount. I'm not particularly concerned with the amount that I think will go over. I think it's just a necessary expenditure, just is what it is. But hopefully, I had been, I had been really dead set that I was going to get PD into that new building before snow flies. I'm not so sure we can pull that off, but.
Snow flies this year?
Yep, yep. I'm not so sure we're going to be able to meet that anymore. Getting a satisfactory quote on structural was difficult. But I think, I think we've gotten there. We'll be able to start moving ahead on some of that stuff.
What about that renter? Where's he at? Is he going to stay the whole year? It's a year, right?
He, no, he gets, July was his first optional month, right? He was committed through June, July, July currently. It was his first optional month. My understanding and expectation is that he will, he will be in through the end of August. The end of August is the final cutoff. There is no option for him to extend beyond that point.
And then we could essentially get to work.
Yeah, the goal is to be able to start, start getting our ducks in a row and get that stuff lined up. So that as soon as that building is cleared out, we are, we've got our plans to, to move ahead. Yep. Unless there's any questions on anything specific to the, to the general fund, and I remind the council, you know, this is a budget work session. There's going to be lots of opportunities to tweak things along the way, and there will be things that will have to be tweaked inevitably.
So essentially, you're saying some of this could be set kind of high. You're just kind of, you're planning.
Yeah.
Is what Mike Becker does best, is he plans and budgets, so.
Yeah, at this, at this point, when you're setting this stuff up this early, essentially six months before the budget is going to go into effect, you, you have to make some educated guesses.
And some of this stuff, I mean, we see since 2018 on the, on the bar graph that you have, it's, it's went up, but it's rightfully went up. Because it's necessary, is what you're explaining, and our tax rate is still a, a negative percentage. So we, you got to be doing something right.
Well, as I, as I always explain, let's, we stick to our three financial goals. And, and I've, I've said more than once is that if, if the city's going to go bankrupt, we're going to go bankrupt paying for public service or public safety, not parks. My words, not anybody else's. We're not going to go bankrupt, but rightly so, public safety should be a priority. I don't know, I've, I've never come across anybody who thought that that wasn't the case. So yeah, periodically, you are going to see those increases. And it's up to council to decide what is the exact right increase, but understanding that there's got to be that balance, right? Can't necessarily have 26 officers, but you also can't get by with zero, so. EDA. Big thing on this is, it's twofold, is remember that the EDA has an EDA levy. That, that maximum levy for the EDA is set by state statute, and I've got some detail in there about, about how we come up with that. So that's the primary revenue source for this fund. Biggest difference in expenditures within the EDA is we've tacked on yet another 5,000. We did the same last year. Put another 5,000 into, an additional 5,000 into engineering, simply because of the demand. Demand for, for shovel-ready lots and industrial sites has been so strong that Jason's going to end up getting work on this. And at least, at least some of that preliminary stuff, like replanning the, the North Industrial Park, putting in those four new lots. Some of that has cost the city's got to take on initially to be able to make those things available. So while we're, while we're, got to front that money, so to speak, we've got a budget for it. Next, we got the water fund. You know, water funds, enterprise funds can be fun. So. When you would look at this, you would look at revenues, you would look at expenditures, and you would think, well, this just looks awful. Net income, negative a million. Cash flow is negative 615,000. But this, you know, this is part of the plan, right? We've, we, we budget capital expenditures, which are oftentimes very, very large expenditures, well in advance. We understand the cash flow is going out. Well, I present 20 years, but I'm always looking 35 or 40 years out. But the big one on this one is, right now, we are planning on 811,000 and change to recoat the water tower. That's been a project that we've had on the radar for some time, and Jason will be giving us a, a report on that. And it'll be up to the council to decide how far we want to go with that, if we want to do a full recoat, or if there's an option to be, do something less, and then revisit that, you know, 10 or 15 years down the road. But the fund, nonetheless, the funds are there and available to be able to undertake that project in total.
Mr. Becker, I had someone ask me recently, well, he didn't ask me, he told me, he said that his water bill went up significantly after a watershed tax. Are you familiar with that terminology?
We, we don't, we don't have a watershed tax.
What is that? What is a watershed tax? Do you know what that is? I don't know.
I'm not entirely sure. That's the only thing I could imagine is that reference to our stormwater utility. So our storm, our stormwater utility, we, we began that in 2016. Initially, we had a number of projects that were mandated by the state.
Because of, we're a green city type of thing?
Well, we're, yeah, we qualify as an MS4 city. Once you cross 5,000, you meet certain thresholds. Suddenly, you have a series of mandates from the state. They do not fund it. You are obligated to, to make good on, on those obligations. If you don't, they will fine you $1,000 a day, and $365,000 a year gets very expensive very quick. We are now through all those major projects, and so this last, in 2021, when we did our rate study, we did drop those rates. Over a three-year period, those stormwater rates will go down 50 percent. So that would be, that would be my response on that one.
We, we don't have a watershed tax?
If we do, it is.
What? This is a business?
If.
I'm not going to comment.
If, if there.
It's a business that's approached me with it.
If there is a watershed tax, it is not something that I am doing.
Okay.
Well, here, the only thing I have to say is, he assumed that, that he could dump oil down the, down the gutter. He goes, I, he goes, with this watershed tax, I should be able to dump oil down the gutter. I go, don't do that. It's going to go very bad for you.
No, that's, that's, that's a very good way to ensure that we actually incur additional costs.
I encourage him not to do that.
That's a great way to make sure that.
That's what he said, based on this tax, he should be able to.
But it isn't there.
I'm not saying it is or isn't. I'm just saying.
He just said it wasn't.
No, okay, I'm, okay, but at the time, I didn't know.
Right, right.
Yeah, but the stormwater utility fees too.
Nor did I, so.
Another important thing to remember on stormwater utility fees is that each residence, regardless of the size of the home or the parcel, is considered an equivalent residential unit, which means if I live on a quarter acre, a third of an acre, an eighth of an acre, I'm paying that same amount monthly as everybody else. There are very vast differences in calculations for businesses, right? We let the engineer handle that. It considers impervious surface in your rooftop and all these kinds of things. For, for businesses, over the next, starting this year and over the, the coming two years, they will notice a very big difference in, in their bills. Because there are businesses that are paying, you know, 100 bucks a month on stormwater stuff. And when that drops in half, that is a big deal for a business owner. Picking up a 50 bucks a month is a big deal, but that's already in the works. That's already, that's already in city code. Next is sewer. This one is another one of these ones where it's, you know, basically the opposite of water in this case. We don't have a lot of capital expenditures on this one. And so once you back things like depreciation out, the net cash flow is, is reasonably healthy. And again, this is, this is the point, right? There are years where an enterprise fund is going to take on additional cash and set that aside for future capital projects. And there are years where it comes time to spend a million or $2 million in a single year. And you need to have had that money there so that we are not bonding and we are not wasting our money on, on interest payments on those, on that debt. And this is that stormwater fund, and in the detail, you'll see that we are moving those, those revenue numbers down. You can compare those, the 2023 budget, you can compare that to 2022, 2021 and 2020 and see that those revenue numbers are going down. That's, that's in, in line with the reduced rates. Nonetheless, still cash flowing healthy. The last rate study, even though we cut 50 percent, we are still holding out a little bit of money to make sure that we are able to handle the next set of state mandates that come down. We don't know what they are, but legislative risk is something that we do need to account for when we do our, when we set our rates. Because if they do give us obligations, chances are they will not be funded. Municipal liquor, this has been a fun one. So this has kind of been my baby here for a few years now, and council was kind enough to trust me on this when I said this could work. But now, now when we get to a first full year budget in this new store, and we actually have a little bit of, a little bit of sales history to go on, we've actually been able to see something. Last year, when we approved the budget, we were kind of doing it blind, right? We knew we'd be in the new, new store, but we had no data to, to put to it. According to the vendors that we work with, the Iceni Liquor Store is the shining star in the state. Most, most other municipalities are maybe up 5 percent. A lot of them are down 5 or 10 percent. And we are up 25 to 30 percent every month. And even with considerably more hours allocated in that budget and, and some, some real expenditures, we should still net cash quite a bit of money. This maintains our $350,000 transfer to the general fund, which helps keep the taxes down. And this covers an entire $250,000 debt service payment as well, and still leaves $78,000 on the table. So if we can continue to put this together and keep those sales going, get more of that northbound traffic to stop, we should look very, very good in about seven or eight years, and we may very well have an opportunity to consider whether we want to retire those bonds early. I just got to stick to the plan and keep moving forward. Debt service funds, there's not a lot to, to see here. We are getting down to the end of, the end of these, right? As I mentioned before, by 2031, second half of 2030 technically. We can be levy debt free. These debt service funds here, 929 through 932, are the ones that are levy dependent. And we're getting down there. The last one will be the 2021 abatement bond that we just refunded. And that'll be done in 2030, so that'd be, that'll be a big day. That'd be a good day for an open house. Yeah, and then attached in the packet is the detail thereafter. Looking for any questions, comments, concerns? Otherwise, confirmation that I'm barking up the correct tree?
Because usually, you've done a great job, Mr. Becker.
Thank you.
I'd like to think we can give them 10 thumbs up. All of us would be doing it, so. Very easy.
Easy on our ears.
Good.
And it's understandable.
Good. I, I appreciate that. I give that, I give that real thought and real consideration. And I, I hope that it's not just the council that can hear what I'm saying and understand, hopefully the residents, hopefully even.
Even though you could go two more hours, you know.
No, don't encourage it.
And I have, I have, but we. Not, I say not right now. If there are any residents that do have concerns about their city taxes, they should come see me. They should come talk to me. One of the best ways to demonstrate that impact about what you're talking about, and I've done this with, with Jeff, with the mayor, with at least one or two residents. with at least one or two residents anyway.
It'd have been more.
We break this down, and somebody's got concern about their city taxes, we break it down. We say, all right, here's what the school was five years ago, here's what the county was five years ago, here's what the city was five years ago, here's what the school, county, and, and city are today. And then we look at the percent, the absolute dollar value increase, and we look at the absolute percent increase. And I do not need to know anybody ahead of time to come in and do that. I already know that my numbers are going to be better.
And then they give it a, keeping a PG a holy crap answer. But that's PG compared to what they're saying.
That's, that's a good opportunity to be able to demonstrate for a resident that otherwise has a concern, that we do exercise fiscal responsibility. And it does matter.
So, Mr. Becker, when is that meeting that people can go question their, their property value?
Yeah, the Board of Equalization meetings are March and April, in that time range.
So when that tax, when that evaluation comes out, they can take that to March and April?
Yeah, so that's a good point. So, basically, your valuation is locked in basically on January 2 of each year.
January 2, you said?
Yeah, basically, it's not quite the first day, because nobody's working. But basically, on January 2, your, your valuation for the next year is locked in. And that's how the taxes are going to get calculated. And when you get that notice at the beginning of the year, saying, hey, here's your valuation notice, you, you do need to address that that spring. And that's for the subsequent year. If you wait until you are receiving a tax notice, or a tax, final tax statement, or, you know, preliminary tax statement or final tax statement, that, that the ship on, the ship on contesting your valuation, that has already sailed. Doesn't prevent you from doing that for the subsequent tax year, but for that particular tax year, yeah, that ship has sailed. You got to, you got to get in in the spring.
Mike, usually, every year, we'll kind of come up with a list of, you know, different things that are kind of optional in your budget, and maybe we're not to that point yet. But there's probably another, another meeting where you'll kind of have a list and say, hey, this is where we could save if we wanted to, or here was where maybe we could, could not spend if we didn't want it to. So, do you have any ideas on what that would look like, or...
Yeah, so I intentionally took that out this year, because the dominant feature of last year's list was employment-related. And given the status, the uncertain status of current contracts, I thought maybe I would just avoid that.
So it's something we can, we can look at down the road here.
Those are, those, that is always the council's prerogative, absolutely. If the council feels that there's something else that I've got line itemed in there that we think could be a little lower, yep, let's, let's bring it up, discuss it. You can bring it to my attention, to Josie's, by email, by phone. And we've got meetings to do that. We've got at least one more budget work session. We can't have a third. We've got a preliminary meeting. We can have subsequent meetings in between, if we'd like, to discuss the budget further, before we finally get to that December one. So we've, we've got time. Yep.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns for Mr. Becker? I guess not, Mr. Becker. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0, therefore we stand adjourned.